All right, it is 5:30 and we will now begin our work session which is being held in person as well as virtually in consideration of the ongoing COVID health concerns. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. This evening, we have just one item on the agenda, which is a presentation from the Gateway developers on their updated project proposals. I know we and the members of the public all have had questions about what they have been working on. And now we have the opportunity to reengage with them about their current vision for the project. Before we invite the developer to make their presentation, I wanted to make a few comments about the purpose and objectives of this evening's work session. I think this will be helpful both for our new council members and for any members of the public who may be joining either in person or virtually. First, I think it is important and fair to acknowledge that there is a level of frustration and disappointment from both council and from our constituents about the false starts and long delays this project has experienced over the years. I think it's also fair to say, we had all hoped to be attending a ribbon cutting ceremony for the project this past December. But unfortunately, that's not where we are. With the expiration and termination of the prior redevelopment agreement on December 31st, 2021, we find ourselves in the unenviable position of being back to some version of square one as we consider changes in the physical components of the project and a revised request for incentives. I want to be clear in setting expectations and establishing the appropriate parameters for tonight's work session. As I think everyone knows, the council does not take any binding action or make decisions in a work session. Council work sessions are designed to provide presenters, staff and council with an opportunity to receive information, ask clarifying questions and develop appropriate next steps. Tonight's gateway work session will check all of those boxes. A discussion of the history of the project and project negotiations will be important as we move through future conversations with staff and the developer. But the focus of tonight's meeting is limited specifically to an introduction to the current project proposal from the developer. In line with that limited scope, the following lines of questions are appropriate for tonight's forum. Questions about the changes to the components of the project, such as the increase in the number of residential units or scaling down of the food hall. Questions about the proposed development schedule, start date, end date, phasing, et cetera. And comments about council priorities relating to sustainability and affordable housing and questions relating to the developers' proposal as it relates to those priorities. We only have an hour for tonight's meeting, so I will generally be limiting questions from council to the scope. Importantly, this is not the time nor the appropriate forum to be negotiating terms for the project, including the developers' planned incentive request. The detailed analysis and evaluation of the project budget and project finances will come in a future meeting. There will be ample opportunity for council questions and discussion of incentives at that time. With the changes proposed by the developer, the project will need to go back through a number of meetings with both planning commission and the city council before we reach any decision points. And while we do not generally take public comment during council work sessions, there will be many opportunities over the next several months for public input. I hope that provides some clarification and guidance as to what we expect for this evening and the plan scope of questions and discussion. With all that said, thanks for humoring me and Ms. Smith, will you please introduce the developers?
Thank you and good evening. So you all know who I am, Laura Smith, City Administrator. And I'm going to turn it right over to Tom Valenti, who will make a few comments and then introduce the other members of their team who are here this evening to give the presentation. So Tom?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and those that are joining us by Zoom. My name is Tom Valenti. I'm with the Cameron Group on behalf of my partner Alan Gross and my partner Joe Gathie and Matt Valenti and Andy Ashwall. We're very, very, very delighted to be before you tonight to talk about our steps forward for this program. We are committed to this project. We are going to see it to completion. It is going to be a great success. Let me tell you, in ascending order, the forces that motivate me. I'm a real estate developer. This is an incredibly exciting project. The mayor talked about some of the frustrations that we've all experienced over the years. I can assure you that we've been as frustrated as you, but this is a great project in a great area. Secondly, I have invested a great deal of my life savings in this project. I would like the chance at least to get back something of it. And if not, then my next priority is to try to help my partner get back the 10 times as much as he's invested in this project, but those are motivations as a business person. Our next highest priority is to make sure that we satisfy and pay the contractors, the material men and our lenders who have placed confidence in us and need to be repaid. The highest priority for me is the fact that I've promised people on the city council, prior members of the city council and people who have become my good friends in Mission over 15 years, that we were going to see this project to its completion in a way we can all be proud. We intend to do that. I'm happy to introduce my son Matt and Andy Ashwall, who are going to get involved in telling you about some of the details of how we propose to move forward. And we look forward to engaging with the council and with your staff in finding a way that we can all be proud of this project in the end. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Valenti. Thanks for having us here today. I just kind of wanted to give you a brief understanding of where we are currently with kind of our, our project. You know, we've come back before you all because we're at the point where we're signed term sheets with our senior lender and our mezzanine lender, which enables us to construct phase one, which we'll go through in a moment of, of the project. It anticipates a incentive package that will also go through. But you know, not to rewind the clock, but as we've all known, we've gone through a lot of fits and starts, stops. You know, we're at the point now where we've got those commitments and we're ready to proceed. I'm going to let Andy take you through the changes that we made to the, the plan, to the FDP and PDP that we've submitted. And then I'll talk again in a little bit.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, members of the city council. Thank you for those that are joining us online this evening. My name is Andy Ashwall. As Tom indicated, I'm with GFI. We've been the partner with Cameron Group all throughout the process and have been involved with the Mission Gateway Project for, for a long time. What I want to do this evening is I sort of want to walk you a little bit through what the new plan is and some of the changes. So you get an idea of what it is. What we have on screen is one of the exhibits that's in the packet that was handed out prior to, to the meeting. If you take a look at what's on the screen, this is a vision of standing at Johnson and Row. This building, one of the reasons we highlighted is, is this is the, where the food hall was. So what we've done here is we've shrunken the food hall down from an entire two-story building and to be about 12,500 square feet of a food hall on the interior side of the building and put an apartment community above. And one of the reasons we sort of focused on apartment communities is right now, I think people understand with, within the sort of greater economy that apartments are doing a little bit better than retail. Lenders and capital markets like it as well as there's definitely a need for housing. And as we'll talk a little bit more about, a need for affordable housing within the communities that we all live in. One of the other changes, as we sort of go through the project plan, it'll, I'll highlight it. Along Johnson Drive, there was also some small shop retail. One of the things that we've done is we've removed a portion of that small shop retail along Johnson Drive and put our leasing center there and all of our community amenities there. That allows for the community amenities to be central to all of the apartments for ease of access and further reduces the retail footprint that we have. Where previously we had some of the community amenities, we turned those into apartments to add a little bit more density to, to the community. Go to the next slide. All right, so there you go. So the, this slide, and this is within the final development plan that we have submitted. It's also part of the package. This is the view from Roland and Johnson. This gives you a sense of the overall community and the Mission Gateway development here. What you can go ahead and see, and for those that are playing along at home, I'm pointing to the office building. This is a Element Hotel. This stays the same. This area here is where the amenities used to be. I'm sorry for those that have to turn around. This is building two, as we sort of refer to it. This is the area where the retail has been removed, where the community entry will be. There is a pool for the community right back here between the parking garage and building two A. The food hall entrance is sort of in this area. Once you enter in off of Johnson, this is the new apartment community. This is the synergy building, this, the 90,000 square foot synergy building and the large parking deck that's central to the community. Overall, we have about 50,000 square feet of small shop retail, 90,000 square feet of sort of big box entertainment space, 373 apartments, around 1,500 parking stalls, a 202 key hotel, which remains the same and a 100,000 square foot office. Again, the largest changes really revolve around building three, the former food hall and building two, which is the other residential. We can keep going. This slide is really just an overview slide, a view from the top. So you have a sense of what we were talking about. You can see that there's a lot of interior courtyards that are fully accessible, especially here behind building two for the entire community to go ahead and take a part of. What was really important here is that, you know, this is, we believe, a real focus and central part of the Mission community. We want to ensure that everybody can come, enjoy themselves, not just in the restaurants, but also in the grass areas here and within the community and your friends and family can stay at, at the hotel. All right, next slide. What this slide does is sort of in color, highlight what I've been speaking about. The red is retail, the blue is residential. The, I'm going to call this orange, is the hotel. The green is the office and the yellow is synergy. So again, where this whole ground floor used to be the food hall, it's now sort of scaled down. And sort of thinking about the way food halls are operating nowadays, they are a little bit more scaled down. There's a few really good, successful food hall operators throughout the country that are operating in 10,000 to 15,000 square foot spaces that provide for somewhere between 10 and 12, sometimes 10 and 15 operators to be successful in that area. It's a great, we still believe it's a fantastic launching pad for up and coming chefs, for food trucks that need to go, that aren't ready for brick and mortar. The intent is still to go ahead and do that within the food hall. All right, next slide. Great. So this is, one of the great things that we, the opportunity to do is that this is the existing building with the new food hall building, what we've gone ahead with the new residential above where the food hall is building. Well, we've gone and we sort of carried forward the architecture from the existing building, from the building two over. So it's going to sort of look like one and act like one large cohesive community. It's going to be the same feel that we have for the Element Hotel, building two that's residential as well as building three that's residential. So the, the idea is that the community, you know, continues to be that the community works together. It's not buildings that are fighting each other. It's buildings that are working together. So when you're there, you'll really feel like you're in one, one cohesive place where all the buildings speak to each other and aren't detracting from, from the experience. Keep going. Slide just really gives you a sense of palette. Woods, metals, yellows, textured concrete that is, you know, throughout the community. You have the next slide. Green space is really important in communities like this. It allows people to gather, allows people to relax, allows people to be outdoors. I think Kansas City has a really good outdoor culture. I know you wouldn't know it on a day like today or in the middle of July when it seems like it's 110 degrees here. But we know that Kansas City is a really amazing outdoor culture and we're trying to really celebrate that and allow people lots of different opportunities to be outside in, in green space through interior courtyards and courtyards that are accessible through the whole community. And that's sort of what you see as well as the tree covering that you see in this plan. All right. Can you bring that, pull that slide back? So I want to highlight, you know, we've, one of the proposals here is for a phasing of, of the project. The phasing of the project is, allows the project to be financed and to be successful and we believe to be, to be completed. Originally, you know, the product was sort of contemplated as a phased project. Phase one is going to incorporate all of the site work, including entryways, parking garage, all of the residential buildings and this retail below it and the synergy building. The office building and the hotel component will not be included in phase one. That's a phase two. That's a phase two part of the overall development. So that's, you know, just to give you guys a sense and overview of sort of where the, where the project has changed. I want to go ahead and do that. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about the request document that we put forward to the city council. Going to talk a little bit about a few of the components of it. So we talked a little about the need and the desire for additional apartment housing units. And that really works hand in hand with affordability. We've, we know that affordability is an issue throughout the country as well as right here in, in Mission, Kansas. And I think it's fantastic that the city council has made it a focus of your support of development projects within your community. So the proposal is for 20% affordable, so an 80/20 split, which is very typical in a lot of municipalities throughout, throughout the country and has already been highlighted here in Mission with the Mission Bowl, with the Sunflower Project, with the Mission Bowl Project. And more specifically, specifically, we've tried to sort of move the affordability throughout the entire project. Not just one type of unit, but the studios, the one bedrooms and, and the two, and the two bedrooms. And what we've done with our proposal is we've structured this so it works not only to address affordable housing, but it also works to meet the needs of the capital markets as well as work within our finance parameters so that we can go ahead and move this project forward and get the project done. Next thing I want to talk about is sustainability. We have some information about sustainability in, in the presentation. So there's a few flavors of sustainability. The flavor that, that we would like to talk about and propose is through National Green Building Council. And that's, they have a green certification for both single-family homes and multifamily homes. I can tell you that I've successfully built in Kansas City, Missouri, a apartment community where we had achieved, we built to and had achieved a bronze standard utilizing a local architecture group, NSPJ. That's also going to be working with us here. What I like about sort of building green, right, and building sustainable is it makes sense, not just for the environment, but it really makes sense for the inhabitants that are living there. It lowers everybody's electric bills. Everybody's paying their own electric in the apartment communities. And nowadays, as builders and developers, everything we're putting into the communities, the way that we're designing it really has sustainable. It's really, we have sustainability in, in mind. A lot of folks, when they think about sustainability, think about LEED. One of the things within your packet is a little bit of a comparison between National Green Building Standards and, and LEED certification. They're both really good. I think what we have found that works better is the National Green Building Standards. One, it hands, it deals with healthy homes. And the two, it addresses operational efficiencies. And as a owner of apartment communities and knowing that our compartment communities need to stand the test of time and last for years and years after they're developed, operational efficiency is really, really important. And it's one of the measurements that National Green Building Standards has that we have to go ahead and achieve. So that's why, you know, why we've been encouraged to utilize National Green Building Standards and what we're proposing here also. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Matt next.
I also just wanted to touch on another point that Andy kind of touched on, that we have, you know, shrunk the size of the food hall and added residential pieces. And, and the reason really that that was done was because coming out of COVID, the, you know, the capital markets really wanted to limit the amount of retail risk that they take on. And especially kind of the food hall setup and a 35,000 square foot plus building that was seen as a very big risk. So that, along with, you know, shrinking the size of that, along with getting rid of some of the small shop retail along Johnson, is really kind of the impetus behind that. And that's what obviously we did and why we did it. Kind of wanted just to jump through the, the requests for incentives. Really, we intend to keep the same structure with the TIF as we had in the previous plan. That would be that the developer, that the, the developer receives the, the benefit of 100% of the real estate taxes to service the bonds. It receives 55% of the, of the sales tax to service the bonds. And then it receives about 10, about 90% of the TGT of the transient guest tax to service the bonds. And the, one of the big differences that we're asking for to kind of make up the gap between the prior format that we had in this one is an additional point in the CID. And that's really because we're getting, you know, we've, we've had to shrink the amount of retail. So we're not going to produce quite as much sales tax necessarily. So we won't be able to really match up the capital stack, the bonds in the prior format. And that's why we're adding a point, a point in the CID. That being said, we may be shrinking that sales tax produced by the, by the project. But, you know, more than doubling the amount of apartments, I would imagine the city will see, not just in this project, but throughout the city, you're going to see an increase in overall spending because of the size of the, you know, apartment project. I don't think we had anything else to cover on the incentives. Do you want to cover anything else? Or do you want to do questions or?
Yeah, I'm going to open it up for council questions. I would ask at least for the first round that everyone limit to one question since we are a little tight on time, but happy to take any questions. Yeah, Trent?
Just wondering if you could speak to the existing structures that are currently on the site, what you plan to do with those? And if those are going to be part of this design as well?
So the existing structures that are on the site are definitely part of the existing design. The way that you go ahead and, where I think part of your question maybe is sort of, are those structures still usable? And the answer is probably a qualified yes. The way that we go about doing that is, what we've done before is we'll engage the structural engineer that's designing the project. The structural engineer will come out. They'll go ahead and they'll check everything that is built there. If there's any remediation that needs to get done or any, any alterations that need to get done, they'll go ahead and advise us of that. We'll go ahead and make that as part of the, a part of the construction effort. They'll have to sign off on it because at the end of the day, the engineer, be their license, I mean, they're the ones that are responsible to make sure that the building is structurally sound. And then as far as the synergy building goes, it's, it's both on the structural side and on the architectural side to make sure that any details or anything on the interior needs to get done, will get done. As things like the roof will bring out the roofing manufacturer. Because the roofing manufacturer usually has a 20-year warranty on their roof. They'll go ahead and inspect it if anything needs to get done to ensure that that warranty is in place. They'll let us know and we'll go ahead and do that. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, Ken then Hillary?
Can you talk a little bit about the actual schedule that you have for the, the two phases? In terms of how realistic they are, that you're going to be able to accomplish it in that timeframe? And also between phase one and phase two, the property that we're phase two is going to be done? How is that going to be maintained during the project?
Can you just repeat the, the last part of it? How's the?
Yes, during the, during the, the interval between phase one and phase two, where the phase two land is, is, is not being developed at that point? How is that area going to be maintained during that period of time?
Got it. Okay. So within your packet, we have a, we have a schedule that, that's proposed. On the PDF, it's page 19 of 28. So a lot of this is really based on our efforts working together to ensure that we come up with a, a project plan and a development plan that, that works. There's some assumptions made here within the schedule and it's really based on a, a good sort of working relationship and thinking about the timing that we anticipate to, to get this done. What I would anticipate is that somewhere around for, for building two, we're really talking about beginning of the first quarter of 2023, potentially the fourth quarter of 2022, that we would go ahead, construction, seeing construction start on building two. That's the building that goes down Roland and is on, on Johnson. As far as the garage and synergy goes, I think what we're looking there is we're looking probably to that construction starting in Q3 of 2022 with an opening in Q3 of 2023. And that really, the synergy building and the garage work hand in hand with each other as well as does all the site work? Because we need to make sure that people can drive into the site and do so safely. The hotel, if I sort of look forward and then I'll, I'll go back to the make safe question. If we think about the hotel, there's a couple of things that need to happen for both office and hotel. Right? The world needs to realize that it's great to work in an office building, right? It's great to come stay in a hotel and travel. My crystal ball is cloudy. If yours are clear, I'd love to borrow yours. All right, but so we're, we're thinking that the capital markets and the world's going to sort of clear up hopefully Q3, Q4 of next year, where we're in a position to go ahead and start designing the building. It's going to take about a year to go ahead and design the hotel building and make sure it's sort of update our design. So we're looking really at our construction starting there, Q2 of 2020, 2023. And the office building would follow shortly after that, really with Q1 of 2023 that we, we would think about starting to design or update the designs of the office, of the office building. So the make safe question, I think, is a really good one, especially around construction sites, which are inherently, can be very dangerous for people coming onto it. There, there's rules about making sure that we don't have like water runoff and, and, and things like that. What I anticipate that we're going to do is we're going to be fencing off the area when the project is up and operational to make sure that nobody wanders on, onto the site. And, you know, plantings or something like that, that's there to make sure that there's not runoff of the soils that are there. We have to do some soil stabilization. That could be a good, that answer the question for you? That could be a good, that answer the question for you?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the, the properties laid fallow for a long time and not been kept really well. And so I'm worried that, that with that phase two interval, that you'll have the same situation. And I'd, I'd like to get some assurance that that's not going to happen.
Yeah, let, let me. Sure. So let's, I just want, we can pull up sort of where the areas that we're, we're talking about are. I, I can tell you that one of the incentives for us to make sure that that doesn't happen is that we have tenants that are there that are going to be paying us rent. We're going to have residents there that are going to be paying us rent. And for people to come to synergy, for people to live in their home and want to rent there, we're going to have to make sure that it's safe, not dangerous and and well maintained. So there, there's really a lot of incentive on, on our side to make sure that we have a well operating property and a valuable property to make sure that's, that is maintained. And what we're projecting for is actually that construction of the office building and the hotel to start while the residential buildings are under construction. So we're, developers are optimistic by, by nature, right? We sort of take large risks. We dream pretty big. And this is one of those, you know, it might be one of those examples. We anticipate things getting back to normal. We anticipate there be a demand for office and and hospitality so that we can go ahead and get these projects underway in line while we're building a face, building two and building three.
So I, I think, let, let me just ask because I think there's a little bit of clarification. So I think the window of time that you're most concerned about would be basically between second quarter of this year, the kind of the year between when you start construction on the garage and synergy or complete construction, you know, to move to completion of that. And then the start of construction in the second quarter of twenty twenty three on the hotel and office. So what, what happens, you know, so we, I think we understand all the site work happens, you have safe movement in and around because you intend on, you know, opening and operating synergy in the parking structure by that, that same time, but in that sort of year, year leading up to, I think is what Councilmember Davis is asking about, you know, how will that portion of the site for phase two be maintained?
And then with the hotel, what Andy was talking about, so you've got, you know, really all this parking area will be completed. You'll have soil stabilization all the way around this entrance and the, and the parking lot there. This entrance will not be, well, sorry, I'm shaking a lot, but that entrance won't be completed that. So basically you'll have from this entrance all the way up and around the hotel footprint would all be, you know, graded and stabilized, fenced off so no one can get in there. On, you know, while we're completing the construction of the apartments and until we start the construction on the hotel and and the office.
All right, Hillary, you were up next.
Um, previously you all had, I believe, had a Tom Colicchio curated food hall. And I'm wondering if that's still the case for this even dialed down version of the food hall as well as any secured lease agreements or tenant agreements that you might have, be it synergy or Element.
Yeah, sure. We continue to work with Tom. Tom is a chef and a partner in one of our hotels in Manhattan right now. We're speaking to him about other opportunities. So he's very much still within the discussion of, and we've been talking to him about how do we do a scaled down food hall? So definitely still in discussions with us and, you know, he's a, he's a great partner with, within our other hotels and within our hotel portfolio. So it continues to be a good relationship and we are talking with him and his team about opportunities here and specifically opportunities within the scaled down food hall. Other leases that we've signed.
So synergy is an existing lease. Synergy is an existing lease. They're still on board to, to, to see the project through. We will have to have some lease amendments that'll update some delivery dates and so on. But, you know, once we kind of get through this process with the city and kind of understand where those dates are going to fall, we'll cement those with the, with the tenant with synergy and and get those lease amendments completed. And then the, we have a franchise agreement with Marriott for the Element Hotel. It's still in place.
Thank you.
And there, there's actually, we still have a a restaurant on the corner of Roland and Johnson that's a signed lease as well. It's a, it's a local tenant company slash company that he said, he's a, he's kind of getting into the restaurant business. He's actually going to put quite a bit of food operations in the new airport. He won the contract for that as well. It's a, it's a longstanding family business here. It's Spanish Gardens. So they, they've looked at, they looked at this for a while and he's excited to be on the corner there of, of Johnson and Roland.
Yeah, Debbie, and then I have a question.
As we move to the next phase of looking at a redevelopment agreement, I would really be interested in looking at the security component that supports this project. It's not like when you and I grew up, things are a lot different now and with so many, such a variety of businesses, office, hotel, et cetera, it impacts my police force and that, that would be something I'd be interested in looking at. Thank you.
Can you guys speak to that? Was there any consideration of, you know, private security? Will there be on staff? Staff on site for the residences or is that yet to be determined?
So I can speak to what we typically do in, in residential apartments. It, it might be similar to what's, you know, what EPC has, has done locally here and what we've done in some of our other communities that we have in Kansas City and some of the other surrounding suburban markets in Kansas City. So, you know, cameras, lighting, card access, controlled access to within and out of, in and out of the building. The parking garage is an open garage. It's really sort of mandated. That's how it works within the, the city code that we cannot have sort of segregated controlled parking or paid parking. We also utilize in most of our communities, a courtesy patrol that circles at multiple times of the night. Residents have that information so they can go ahead and call the courtesy patrol if, you know, if, if needed. And I think we'll definitely work with local law enforcement to make sure as, as well as, you know, all the other emergency services with the EMS and with fire as they're walking through the community and understanding the community so they know, they know where to go. You know, the synergy, I anticipate if they need something, they'll, they'll make sure they have the, the appropriate measures taken at, at, at certain times.
Yeah, my, my question kind of ties in to Hillary's on the food hall. You know, the pitch to prior councils was that this was a large, unique, regional attraction and draw a large, you know, hopefully very successful tourism draw for the city as a whole. And now that that piece is missing, I was wondering if you could speak to, in terms of value to the city on this project, you know, what is replacing that in your mind?
When we presented the food hall initially to the city council, we did not have synergy. And synergy came after. We, we believe that synergy will be an incredible draw for this project. Matt is on the phone with them. I'm not exaggerating weekly. As he said earlier, they have a signed lease, we'll, we'll need to amend the lease, but I believe that the synergy will be a great draw for the community. The twelve to fifteen thousand square foot food hall won't be as large, but I don't think that, you know, I, I, quite frankly, I think it's impossible to get financing for a food hall that large anymore in, in light of what we've just gone through in the last two years.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions from anyone who hasn't asked anything yet? And I'll circle back. Yeah, Leah?
Could you tell us again, I knew past councils knew what synergy offers, please?
Sure. It's a, it's kind of a full entertainment venue that's got ten theater screen. Now, they can change this and kind of move parts around as their business evolves, but as of right now, they have got ten theater screens. They've got bowling alleys, a, a large restaurant bar area, a lot of redemption games, and then they've got, they've got a couple of different concepts that they kind of move in and out. One being escape rooms. They've done laser tag. They've done axe throwing. But they'll kind of change things in and out. They, they're doing the simulators now, the sports simulator. So they don't just have golf. They've got almost any sport you can imagine. They can do the simulators for those. So they use a lot of those kind of activities and they'll kind of move them in and out every couple of years so that, you know, there, there's not a staleness to it. I don't think I'm missing anything there.
I, I, I would describe it as a main event meets movie theater, right?
Yeah, with maybe, with maybe, you know, a little bit more in terms of some more interactive stuff. Yeah, sure. You know, through, just to give everyone an, an idea, through COVID, most theater chains, especially in twenty twenty, did not operate in plus numbers. Synergy was one of very few theater chains to operate in the black almost the entire time through COVID. And that two, two things, one, they've got a lot of other, their operations down in Texas. But also, you know, the fact that they have, they don't rely on Hollywood to produce movies because they have all of those other components allow them to really, you know, keep their business rolling right along. So financially, they're extremely strong and have come out on the other side of this in a really good position. As as you would think, since we're able to get construction loans to finish it.
Yeah, we're going to go Ben and then Mary?
Yeah, so I'm looking at some of the, some of the changes that have been made along the Johnson Drive frontage and I'm seeing a lot of, in the stacking diagram, the blue residential, where maybe there used to be some, some retail and, and so on. And the renders don't look like residential units. Is that all going to be like amenities, common space? What's the character of that residential along Johnson Drive on the first floor?
Sure. Could you keep going up? You stop right there. Is this, just to give me a sense, and I know this is behind you, this is, so we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm seeing like big windows and it doesn't look like, you know, housing units, but it's shown as blue in the background. I'm just wondering what that space is.
Yeah, sure. You, you can go up just a little bit and I can sort of speak with it on, on the slide. Okay, so we're looking right now at, at what we'll call building three on the corner of Johnson and Row. So the area of the building that is closest to building two and the entrance off of Johnson, this is laid out currently to be the proposed food hall space right here, right on, on the corner as people come in to really activate the interior as well as they'll be on the corner of building two. This end cap will also be a restaurant, retail, retail space. So it's a very alive. What we've done really so we can keep with the character of a, of the taller, you have to match with the height of the ground floor building. These are going to be, those, these apartments are going to be elevated. So you're not walking out of your balcony at the street level. You're sort of sitting a, around where folks heads are. So you don't feel like the community is in your apartment home. There are going to be double heights. We have these programmed right now to be loft spaces. So think of a two bedroom with a loft, three bedroom with a loft, one bedroom with a loft, taking advantage of what, what is really going to wind up being about twenty foot high ceilings in, in this space. So I, I think they're going to be pretty, yeah, they're going to be really unique spaces that we think will, you know, one of the things that's happening, you know, around the country and you guys are feeling it too, right, is this whole work, there's a lot of work from home. So we've seen that where traditionally folks might be renting a one bedroom for a couple. Now they want a home office or now they want a two bedroom. You know, families are looking at three bedrooms are looking for flex spaces also where somebody can work from home. And I think what we're going to be able to accomplish here is allow people to go ahead and do that with the loft spaces.
Okay, yeah. So I mean, it sounds like you're familiar with the Sunflower project. We've kind of got an echo of the live work concept, in other words.
So li- live work has its own connotation to it. So I don't, I don't want to speak to live work because I, this is not zoned. We're not asking for live work. It's, it's really, how do we provide flexible space within somebody's home? That it could be a work from home space. It could be a den. It could be a library. It could be a yoga room. You know, realizing that there is a population there that needs us and it also because the ceiling height, we can go ahead and we can, we can do that.
Mary, go ahead.
Um, so with the kind of scaled back, sorry to throw you back to food hall, how many different like food stalls would you expect to be in that space? Kind of rough estimate, doesn't it be?
Sure. So th- those that are doing, I'll, I'll tell you, ten to fifteen thousand square foot food halls, you're really, I, I've seen anywhere from ten to fifteen different food stalls. And doing it really successfully and cohesively through, you know, it still has a central kitchen, allows for pickup stations, central bar seating area. And really it continues to be what we're hoping to do is, you know, highlight chefs' visions, chefs' food as well as bring in others in, in the community. They're looking to, you know, chefs that are emerging that need sort of a leg up to start, food halls, food, food trucks that need, you know, a place to go ahead and start before they grow into brick and mortar. Still, the idea is to make it an incubator of really amazing food.
Yes, Kristen.
It's nice to see you both again. It's been a while. I was just wondering about the condition of the, the space right now. And when is something going to be done to kind of make it look a little bit more presentable, especially with the fencing and some of that apron-ing that's coming, coming off and that type of thing and when that might be started. Thank you.
Fencing has struggled. You know, that there's, it's an amazing site. Winds really barrel across that site with, with a lot of force. We, we've been working hard to try to maintain the lawn, you know, slow down weed growth and maintain the fence, I think, as, as best we can. I think what we're really looking forward to doing is moving through the process. We can get construction started, get a new fence up, get people in there working, you know, and a, a new fence wrap and a new fence wrap up.
Did you have a timeline or an answer to Kristen's question on the timeline of that?
As far as when we're going to get construction started or?
Or better fence, better, you know, planting, mowing, et cetera.
A lot of that, a lot of that really is about when we go ahead and we can get ourselves in the chute for getting financing closed and getting construction started. We're going to do our best to continue to maintain the fence and be out there aware of it. We're in, you know, we're aware of when there's issues with it. We try to come out and remediate those issues. So I, I think it's, you know, really about how quickly we can go ahead and get ourselves in the chute for construction starting. So we can, we can really address the, the fencing and the fence wrap.
And we, we actually have, it'll be sooner than, than that. We'll need to sit down and talk because I know just, there's some erosion control issues that we've identified and starting to look at preparing for that and anticipating some, that, you know, the, looking at the development schedule. So we'll circle back quickly with that to address some of the other site issues as well.
Okay, I think we had a couple of people with second round questions. I saw Hillary first and then Ken and then Leah and then Trent, if we still have time. I just wanted to ask about the sustainability piece, which I'm glad to see something included in this proposal. But in, in comparing it to our most recent development, as you all mentioned, with Mission Bowl and looking at LEED silver certification versus, I'm, I apologize, I'm not familiar with NGBS, but I'm hoping you can talk a little bit about the specifics of, you know, silver versus bronze, which I know it's apples which I know it's apples and oranges. But if you can talk a little bit about the specifics around the differences in those pieces, that would be great.
I think it would be better for us to maybe come back to you and show you a more, you know, there's a really detailed checklist that's involved with National Green Building Standards as well as with LEED. I think it would be probably more productive and a better way to answer it, for me to be able to answer your question is to come back to you with the checklist. So you can actually see sort of line by line of what's involved with each one of those. I think the biggest difference, one of the, one of the reasons why I like the National Green Building Standards, it actually requires the individual that's signing off on it to actually come out to the building and see that what was designed was actually implemented. And then to come back when the building is complete to make sure that the building is actually operating the way that it was designed to operate. And that for me is like I talked about, you know, operationally, that's a, that's a big part of it. But we can follow up with y'all with some more specifics on the checklist.
Yeah, and I think to that piece and Hillary's point, it would be helpful for us to have an understanding of, you know, bronze sounds lower than silver, but the standards again are different. So kind of, yeah, knowing is that really equal to or exceeds the LEED silver in terms of the component pieces? Yeah.
And I can go ahead. I think the other thing that we'll do is that we achieved, for example, if you need 200 points to be bronze and you need 275 points to be silver, you know, the building that we recently completed in KCMO had about 316 points. However, we had some categories where we didn't score enough points to get an overall silver because there is a, there's a minimum. That's sort of also one of the differences, right? It's not just accumulation of points. It's how you score them in categories. So what I can do is I'll also provide to you how we scored on another building. So you can sort of see that score. And generally what we're trying to obtain, so you can see where we're going and in which categories. And they might be categories that are really important to the council or others where we may not score as well or not be able to score as well, may not be as important. So this is one where the details matter. The headlines are really just headlines.
Right. Ken?
Yeah, my, I'm going to follow up on some of the sustainability issues. Are you looking at all at solar farm or anything like that? Use of your rooftops for purposes other than just being a roof?
It is not something that we are exploring at this time within the buildings that we have constructed. On the roofs, right now is where the HVAC farms are, which doesn't leave a ton available for solar. And within apartment communities, each apartment is really submetered for their use of electric. So a lot of times if there are solar farms, it's really about the common areas. And those common areas are mostly, everybody's putting in all LED lights. So a lot of the electric on the common areas is, is pretty minimal.
Also water reclaiming, are you doing anything in terms of water storage runoff?
So we have some water storage that is there through some plantings that are happening on roof setbacks on Building, on Building Two. I don't, gray water retention for watering is not currently part of the plan. Grave water retention for reuse within, within the toilet facilities is not currently part of a plan. I don't know how far into the, into that you want to go, but we could, it's definitely something I'm more than happy to talk about further.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and I do agree that a follow up on sustainability more broadly would be important for council. If we could maybe jump to Leah's question, then, or you're good? Okay, I did have one final question, then we'll go Trent. Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of echo the sustainability piece from others on council. I appreciate the nod, but we've had some recent success with other development projects in town. It is a big priority of council. And so my hope is that this can represent more of the beginning rather than the end all be all package where we talk about these incentives and the responsibility, you know, you all have being such a central part of this area and region. I think there's a lot of opportunities to be a leader there and, you know, really look at kind of an all of the above approach that I'd be happy to plunge into the details with others and, you know, see what we can do. I did want to talk really quick about the affordable housing piece because the majority of the units in here are either studios or one bedrooms. And, you know, when we think about affordable housing, a lot of times we're talking about families. And there's really not a lot of, you know, outside of those 10 two bedroom units, that doesn't really seem like a lot of capturing the spirit of what affordable housing could be after. So I just didn't know if you had a reason for kind of that distribution? If you could kind of speak to that a little bit more specifically on the breakout.
And I'm going to jump in and tag on to that question because I have a related question. Hopefully you can tackle them together. So again, with the Mission Bowl development, we set affordable housing as 60% of AMI, whereas this is a mix of 80%, 90% and 100% of AMI, which I'm not sure is entirely aligned with council expectations. So if you could speak to those two pieces, that would be helpful.
We're, you know, we're working within a line to make sure that we're making the project feasible for what can be done and what's currently tolerated and what's acceptable within the agreements we have with the, with our capital market providers, you know, to make sure that we can move the project forward and have it be a success.
And so that would both be true on the percent of AMI and the unit breakdown?
It's, you know, it's a full package. You know, I think it's very hard on a project that's this size and this complex to sort of pull out specifics without talking about the impact of the whole.
Yes, we'll go to Hillary for probably our last question. It's just a follow up to affordable housing as well. The occupancy rates and to follow up on Trent's question in relation to three person, the three person cap for two bedrooms. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because I would imagine that four bedroom or four persons for a two bedroom, especially if you're talking about a family, would more than work.
I wouldn't think of it as a cap. The way that it's thought about in a, in a two bedroom is that's, that's the amount that could be there. It can fit a family of four with, without a doubt. But you, you have to be able to put if it's, you know, minimum is a family of three. We don't know what the future holds. We don't know if the only people that will be wanting these units or the first to want to go ahead and rent them are families of three. They could be all families of four. They could be all families of five. You know, we have to, within our underwriting, we're making our assumptions. We have to be a little bit conservative thinking about the case that may, may be presented to us. And that's the way it's, that's the way that we thought about it.
Well, sorry, didn't get the mic on. I know we'll be working with staff to calendar our future discussions and considerations. I think it's important to reiterate for those tuned in and for everyone in the room that of course, over the course of the city's work related to the Gateway Project Site, whether by this council or the ones that preceded us, ensuring that the city's financial interests have been protected has always been front and center. We've seen this through implementation of a special benefit district to recover stormwater costs and through pre-development agreements that ensure reimbursement of the city's costs for third party consultants, among other things. So I just wanted to say, I can assure you all that protecting the city's interests will continue to be the utmost priority for this council as we move to reconsider the revised project. Ms. Smith, I know there is a related action item included in our F and A meeting starting in a couple of minutes or committee meetings in a couple of minutes. For the benefit of the public, could you give a quick overview of that item?
Yes, quickly. And you touched on the pre-development agreement. So although the council takes no action in this work session, and that will happen in future meetings, as the mayor referenced, this evening's finance and admin agenda does contain a new revised pre-development agreement. This is something that has been in place with the Gateway developers and is a tool that we use on all of our development projects, particularly when there's a request for incentives so that we have the opportunity to secure reimbursement for third party consultants and other costs that may be incurred as a part of evaluating those proposals. And that that becomes a cost and expense of the developer and not the city or the taxpayers of our community. So that is the action item that is on the finance and admin committee agenda that would advance to the February 16th meeting.
Great. And we are to the minute, but I just wanted to make one note that if there's any member of the public this evening who would like to receive notice of upcoming meetings related to the Gateway Project, please make sure to provide your name and contact information to staff. There's a staff contact provided in the chat and we'll add your name to a list. We will now move into our committee meetings. Thank you again to the development team for coming tonight. I would also mention if you are participating virtually and would like to attend the committee meetings, you will need to leave this Zoom meeting and join another Zoom link available on our website. Thank you all.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. Laura, thank you.